Good evening, everyone. Today's session of April eleventh, twenty twenty-three is called Order. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Community Development, Community and Economic Development Director Jay Hill has information for us about code enforcement, and he's joining us via Zoom tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm ill. You wouldn't want me there if I could be. But thanks for having me. I'll ask a procedural question real quick. Donna, do I share my screen here for the presentation or what's? Okay. I will do that then. One second. Okay, so that should work. Hopefully, everybody can see my presentation that I'm certain. So, thank you, Mayor Council. I am Jay Hill, Community and Economic Development Director. For those of you at home watching, thanks for being here tonight. Wanted to give you guys an update on code enforcement and kind of our processes, challenges that we're having, the state of things. And then we'll have time at the end for questions and answers. So, but if you have anything as we go, please feel free to chime in and happy to provide context. So. Our code enforcement staff, which includes myself and our two code enforcement officers. We are tasked with a broad variety of code enforcement underneath our municipal code. The primary one that you'll know is Chapter eight point seven zero, which was our Public Nuisances Ordinance. We just recently amended that a couple of months ago. Also, we're responsible for abatements for hazardous and derelict structures under Chapter seventeen oh eight, and we have a whole procedure which I'll talk about tonight with that. Other lesser-known sections of the code that might need code enforcement include our water and sewer sections of the code, building code subdivisions, zoning, our shoreline master program. Those are the ones that are specifically called out for our code enforcement officers. However, we know that they're not necessarily always the subject matter experts with relation to these items. For example, our senior planner would be the one who would identify a zoning issue, and he would work with code enforcement to resolve it. Our building official would understand that there's a building code violation and would work with our code enforcement officers to resolve it. So the way I like to see it is, other than the first couple of items. Our code enforcement officers are kind of process officers and our subject matter experts, our building official planner, our stormwater inspector, things like that. They're the subject matter experts that help process these violations. We're also responsible for animal control. As you know, we have the shelter that takes care of dogs here in the city of Shelton. Are one of our code enforcement officers, per her job description, is fifty percent dedicated to shelter operations and animal control. So that includes care for the animals, cleaning of the shelter, advertising dogs for rehoming, working with our partner agencies, like Adopt a Pet and Kitsap Humane Society to rehome dogs. She also conducts investigations related to loose dogs or dangerous dogs within the city, all animals actually, derelict animals. And also incident reporting. So if there's been an attack, she is trained to help augment the police department in their investigation of animal attacks. And then also, we conduct animal licensing. So there's a fair bit of work to do just on the animal control side, much, much less to say about our extensive code enforcement responsibilities. So our process for code enforcement, people kind of wonder, well, how can we get things cleaned up faster? What's, what's the, you know, the process as far as how we go from a complaint to resolution? And it actually takes a fair bit of time to work through. We typically offer people, first stop is a courtesy notice. Just, hey, you may not notice, but you have an issue on your property of some manner, and we give them fourteen days to resolve that. We send those notices out by certified mail. We often hang them on the property if necessary. Just trying to be polite as much as possible, because in a lot of cases, people don't necessarily understand that they have violated the code or that there are consequences for violating the code. Some people aren't even aware that the, that a municipal code exists or how it exists. And so we try to give people the benefit of the doubt on that. However, after that fourteen days has elapsed, then we give them a notice of violation and per our code and per state law. That is director discretion, but that varies usually between fourteen and thirty days. Now, that being said. It could be, i- if it's an emergency kind of situation, we can order immediate resolution of it. But typically speaking, we like to give them fourteen to thirty days. If they still have not begun resolution of the formal notice of violation within that time period, then it can become an infraction. Starts as a class-two infraction. Thirty days later, it becomes a class-one infraction. Thirty days after that, it becomes a misdemeanor. And so it takes, you know, during these periods, there's required notice to the violator. There's the opportunity for them to resolve. At the infraction level, actually gets submitted to the court as a, as a ticket, similar to a parking ticket or something like that. At the misdemeanor level, it's sent to the court and actually begins criminal proceedings, and that's really reserved for some of our most egregious cases. We prefer to get things through as early in the process as possible because it costs us the least amount of money. Our code does allow us to assess fines, fees, attorney's costs, things like that. With, with these cases, however, we have to have that number upfront before it goes to the court to be able to put on the ticket for what it costs. And so, you know, in the case, we have a misdemeanor, and we actually have two misdemeanors right now that have been going on for several years. And because of delays in the court system or because of, you know, not necessarily the court itself, but delays of the the violator asking for additional time or so on and so on. And so, you know, that eats up additional costs from our prosecuting attorney, from the defense attorneys, from the courts, from our staff for noticing and so on. So it can take a lot of time and effort and funds to resolve it at the misdemeanor level, which is why we try as early as possible to get out with the courtesy notice and just be like, hey, please, please solve this as quickly as you can before this becomes a bigger deal.
Jay, can I ask you a question really quick?
Of course.
So we've had several bank-owned properties in the past that have been derelict properties. I mean, who are we going to charge a misdemeanor to if it's a bank-owned property? It's been foreclosed on. People have been evicted.
So in, in that case, and I can't say necessarily how it's been done in every case that it's happened so far, it's my understanding of the law that for, for example, we actually have one, we're working on this right now, that it's a, it's a bank-owned property. And we don't, the, the last owner of record doesn't exist, the LLC that owned it doesn't exist. The PO box that it was registered to doesn't exist, so on and so on. So eventually, by the time we have to track down some of these cases. It would actually be served to the, the legal representative, the, I'm trying to remember the exact term, the agent, as on the Secretary of State recording. So if it was, in theory, owned by some large multinational bank LLC, we would serve it to their registered agent. But hopefully, by, by that point, in those, those cases, they would have already received other notification and tried to make some attempts before that.
Yeah. I have a question. I want to go back up just to the animal control part. So are you considering all loose dogs, all dangers? Or are you, is that how you're approaching any loose dog as a dangerous dog?
Uh, there, there's two definitions in our code and within state law about dangerous dogs specifically. And so those are for ones that have been declared dangerous by an order. There's actually a hearing that has to adjudicate if the dog is dangerous or not. So that's, that's an official term, and we actually have a lot of strict requirements about licensing and monitoring of those, quote, dangerous dogs. It's a, almost like a, like a probation kind of term or something like that. So that's, that's a very specific term. Loose dogs is, is what we just refer to, any number of, you know, dogs that might be running free and unaccompanied through town. They're not necessarily dangerous, but they are definitely unattended. Including a little pit bull puppy that was just found last night underneath some steps that's now available for adoption, if anybody's interested.
Because I kind of, I think, since it's on the same line with a slash, I'm, I'm thinking of, people might look at him and put him together. As a loose dog could be a dangerous dog, which they could. I'm not saying they can't, but.
They, they definitely could. I was just saying that there are investigations for loose dogs and/or dangerous dogs. Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so back to properties and infractions. So I'm just curious, does code enforcement actually see a property that has an issue? And do they take it upon themselves to issue the notice, or do they wait for a complaint by a member of the community first?
Most of our enforcement so far is by complaint. We have not been, as far as I'm aware, directed to undertake a more proactive kind of thing. Now, that being said, in some cases, they, they have done that. If there's a case of, you know, something causing impediments in the right of way or if there's a hazardous situation, if it's undertaken along with, there's been some police actions in the community that have uncovered some code enforcement cases as well. And so in those particular cases, our officers have taken, you know, more proactive steps. And if there's something particularly egregious, you know, they're authorized under the code, but it's been kind of a more longstanding practice to, to be more of a complaint-driven organization. We have enough complaints to keep us busy throughout the week that we haven't necessarily had the time to go looking for them all. But that being said, you know, that's a, that's a policy direction that we're absolutely willing to undertake.
Okay, and then I have kind of a second question to that for the follow-up. Do they actually go up and make sure that they've actually handled the situation after the first fourteen days, or do they wait for another complaint?
Uh, so from, from the first courtesy notice to go make sure that they have actually, let's say, somebody built over their property line or something, and they were given a notice, hey, you need to, you need to pull this back. They, they would actually go out to the site and investigate. And there are the same due process requirements for investigation that we would have, you know, from a police officer or anything like that. You know, we can't enter property without permission of the property owner or without a warrant, without, you know, following the, the legal due process restrictions. But there's enough investigation often that we can accommodate from, you know, aerial photos, from taking photos from the street, from taking measurements off of. There's, there's other ways that we can often do investigations without having to go on the property one hundred percent of the time.
Okay, thank you.
I follow up on that? So oftentimes, when we get complaints, it comes in the form of what is the city doing about XXX property? Or, you know, why hasn't the city taken some action? And when we respond with, well, nobody's complained about it, usually that does not go over very well. So what does a more proactive code enforcement program look like? I think we might be interested in taking a look at that at this point.
Uh, well, I would say.
The landscape, the neighborhoods don't seem to really be improving with the methods that we're going to at the moment, so.
I, I would say that the first stop is if somebody calls and says, hey, what's going on with X and X property? Then, you know, we, we maybe have a complaint to follow up on and, and can and should. With the adoption of the My Civic Portal, we've had a lot of the complaints coming directly to our code enforcement officers through the, through the website, and we're able to look at the status and follow up there. But for undertaking more direct proactive code enforcement, I mean, that's, that's as, I won't say simple, but it's, it's as simple as driving through the neighborhoods and looking for some of those things. I know we, we don't necessarily want to be, shall I say, you know, nitpicking on, on minor issues, but, you know, to, to take.
We're not talking about the people who, you know, there's minor issues, but they didn't mow their grass one week or something. They left their trash cans out at the street for a day extra or something. We're talking about the blatant disregard for public safety and public health.
Absolutely.
You know, those, those types of things, you know, that, you know, go against the goals and vision of the city. So I'm, I'm interested in taking a look at that. We, we funded an additional code enforcement officer two years ago to try to, you know, take a bigger bite out of this one. And it just seems like it's taken some time to get us going. And again, I come back to the reason being, sometimes being that it's complaint-driven until there's complaint, action usually doesn't start right.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I don't think we should wait for a complaint when somebody has ten and licensed cars leaking oil in their front yard.
Right. We also have to remember too, that fifty percent of code enforcement's time is being taken up with animal control. And we should, and we're having.
Fifty percent of one person.
A one person? Yeah, just one? Don't, don't get both. Aren't they both active in that, though?
They, they both do work out of the shelter some hours. They, we have them alternating hours out of City Hall and out of the shelter right now. So, but they, they do both spend some amount of time working with the shelter. I will say that for the last couple of months, we've been, due to some confidential personnel issues, we've been down one code, code enforcement officer. So we've just had the one for the last couple of months. And we anticipate the other one returning back to work soon. So, so we have, you know, not, not that this is, you know, the, the long history, but within the last couple of months, we've been a little short-staffed in this regard.
So Jay, can you clarify then, is it a half FTE that is budgeted under Animal Control and Services and the other one and a half FTE toward general code enforcement? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, and just to follow up, some of the points being made here, one of the things that's bringing to mind would be too, is saying, we're looking at complaint-driven. Of course, if things are being brought forward, we should be addressing those. But there may be a minor complaint that is brought forward, and yet there may be a major complaint that is going unaddressed because it hasn't been brought to the attention of the city. So I concur with Deputy Mayor Schmidt. I think a more proactive and equitable approach to this might be something that we ought to be looking at within our procedure for this program. I agree.
Um, and I will agree with you that I would like to see more proactive code enforcement. If I can go to my next slide, I can kind of talk about our abatement proceeding, which is kind of our, our next, you know, it's the, it's the hammer that we have to, to get some stuff done, but we also have some limitations. So per Washington state law, within ten to thirty days of the notice of violation, so going back to before it's been noticed as an infraction. We have to hold an abatement hearing. And so that requires the hearings examiner to issue a written finding of fact requiring the property owner to somehow improve the situation on their property. If the property owner fails to abate, which has happened in most of the cases, we very rarely get, you know, voluntarily happy compliance just from the courtesy notice, then I can direct actual abatement, and then the costs are assessed as a lien against the property. Part of the problem with that, though, is that we don't have an abatement fund within the city. We don't have any dedicated pool of money that would go into abating these structures. And I see that we have abated a few in the past. In fact, I was actually just working with somebody today locating a, a release of lien from, I think about five years ago. And that was nine thousand dollars just to demolish one house on Eleanor. And so we have several properties that meet the standard for full abatement right now, where, where we would require demolition and destruction of the property. But if we had to direct that, we don't have any funds identified for how to proceed with that. In the past, we've been able to squeeze it out of, you know, some, I think one of the houses was actually demolished by public work staff. There's been a few that have been done by private contractors, but it's very pretty rare that the abatement occurs. And I know, I see Mark sitting there, and Mark, Mark was involved with a couple of abatements in the past. And I don't know if he has anything that he wanted to add, and sorry to put him on the spot for this, but he's, he's got a lot more history with this. But that being said, I mean, the, the cost of abatement can run from a few hundred dollars to, I, I talked to some contractors about demolition. And they said, as long as there's no asbestos, you know, it's, it's usually not too bad. But if there was an older home that had asbestos, for example, and we could be looking at twenty-five thousand dollars for demolition of the structure. And so in, in some cases, demolition can be just, you know, boarding up the structure and waiting for repair. That's not necessarily a great option. We have one on Seventh right now that we've been, we've had that thing boarded up every couple of weeks for the last several months. And people keep finding their way in and bringing stuff out to the street and so on. So if, if we're going to be more proactive and if we're going to, you know, we, we're, we're bound by this ten to thirty days of notice of violation. We need to be able to follow through on the abatement. And I'm willing, willing and able to go forward with that. But again, as I mentioned, I don't, I don't want to spend money the city doesn't have on abatement, because what'll happen is that'll guess, get assessed as a lien to the property. And then we'll say, not best-case scenario, but likely-case scenario. We won't see that money again until the property goes to tax sale, you know, about three years later or so. And so that's, it's a commitment of holding up the city's money for a period of time until that's released through tax sale. So I just wanted, I mean, it's not an excuse for why we shouldn't. It's a, it's a request for, if, if you can find me the abatement money, I can go out and, you know, we've got a, what we call our hot list right now of a pretty decent number of properties that are, some of which are, I, I don't want to get too graphic, but I mean, talking feces in buckets on people's doorsteps. Really, really egregious violations of our code. But if we're going to deal with it, we have to be able to follow all the way through, and we have to do it within the required time period. Otherwise, the clock starts over, and we have to go back and do it all over again because of the RCW, so.
I have a question. That's all right. So I understand you're talking about, you know, tearing down some of these buildings, but perhaps maybe it's a property where people are actively living in. And however, the yard has become basically a trash, a garbage dump. The entire yard, you can't tell it from the dump. In fact, the dump's probably cleaner than their yard, and those properties actually exist here. So let's say, okay, so the neighbor complains. Does the city ever offer some sort of assistance if these people say, we can't do it, and maybe we're elderly, maybe we can't afford dump fees? I know that we've been really willing in the past to help different, with different things. I'm wondering what we could do in those situations, so they don't just feel completely attacked and at complete loss on how to handle it.
Uh, so I know in previous years, there were dump vouchers that were given out by, I think it was United Way. And they were able to give out a couple throughout the community for people who needed them. I will use this as an opportunity to pitch, we're having our community cleanup on May thirteenth and May twentieth down at the old Mel's Lot at the corner of First and Grove. And we're going to have dumpsters, dump trucks, staff available for people to bring their garbage, get it off their properties, and we'll be hauling it to the dump for them. And so that is something that we've been able to squeeze out of, and we have a couple of ongoing vacancies within the city right now. And it was determined by the previous city manager, we could use some of that funding to hold a community cleanup event. Again, we don't have a dedicated fund for that on a yearly basis. I would love to see that. But at least for this year, we're able to, to pull that off. This is something, I guess, hasn't been done in a couple of years because of COVID. But we're, it's, it's important to us to get it going again this year.
Jay, I'll jump in for one second and provide some historical data. So one thing we have to be careful of is the gift of public funds, right? So if it's private property, we have to tread very lightly on what we do on that private property. So it's very important that we provide them every opportunity to clean up their properties prior to spending those public funds. Now, if we have an abatement fund, we have the ability potentially to move into that property with an access agreement or something as such that we'd have to have a cooperative agreement between the property owner and the city to, to ever move on to their property or an order from the hearing examiner to move forward. In my experience, the last couple of abatements we've done, we've done full demolition, they've been close to thirty thousand, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. The dump fees are quite expensive. We have to rent an excavator. Typically, we're pulling out our code, requires demo print to pull out the foundation. And so you're disposing of the concrete and everything that attaches that. Jay Hill's absolutely correct that it takes somewhere between three to, well, four to five to six years to recoup those costs. We have one on E Street, I think it's at least four years old. It was going to go through tax foreclosure sale, but there was a hiccup there. And so it's going to be another year prior to us receiving those funds and recoup the costs, if it does sell of the lien and recoup the lien that we put on the property. But again, if we're four or five years down the road, we've lost, right? We've lost some funds on that because the, the economy scale, the inflation costs, you're not receiving as much money as you put into that property.
Probably on E Street, we definitely have lost on that.
Correct.
Why, why do we not foreclose on our liens, though?
And that's county process.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't foreclose on the property. So typically.
But you can foreclose on your lien. When you lien a property, you can foreclose on, when you lien a property, you can foreclose on your lien, which can force a sale. Why do we not do that?
They are, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of, I, I haven't been involved in that process. Typically, there are arrears in, in property tax anyway, so they're not, they're not responsible property owners that might go back to the bank, or they, they own it outright. And it's free and clear, and they just let it go.
Okay, but I mean, we could definitely expedite that process by foreclosing your liens.
Great.
So, okay.
Let's, uh.
Maybe, maybe like you guys were talking about using outside contractors. I mean, there's a whole business of people that just do this so they can lien properties. And then over time, collect these liens, because as a contractor, you can foreclose your lien. But.
Great.
We can get deeper into that later.
Absolutely.
Well, and just two things to follow up on that. I also know that the city has partnered with United Way and other volunteer groups in the past to actually do physical cleanups with volunteers. Maybe there's a way we could solicit from our volunteer community who is available to provide what resources as part of. And the city's goal is, of course, connecting citizens with resources to solve that issue, so it does not become a city issue. I would also say, though, that I think that, to your point. We don't want it to get to the point that we're needing to put it through an abatement process. If we can address some of these things earlier on, before it is such a huge problem, it is a much less expensive problem to fix. So again, getting back to a proactive approach, I think it will pay for itself in the long run. Absolutely. And it'll make the city look better.
Yeah.
Jay, what would, I mean, we're looking at our budget really closely, even this year, let alone next year. How much money would you like in an abatement fund?
Uh, so when we had been planning for the budget process for this year, I had asked Jeff for a quarter of a million. And while that does sound like a lot, that's ten homes essentially of, of varying levels of, as, as Mark just said, you know, some of them can be thirty thousand, some of them could be a few thousand. And what I had hoped was that we would be able to take on three or four houses, like our worst, really, really bad ones. Not going to list addresses right now, but there, there are a few that need to go immediately. We're talking holes in the side of buildings, you know, unsanitary conditions. We could do three to four per year and kind of rotate them through with another three to four per year. And then the goal would be that by the time the first ones are seasoning off, that, you know, we're seeing the tax sale, and then we're recouping the cost at tax sale. We can put that money back into the fund. So the idea was, was for two hundred fifty thousand for a revolving abatement fund. If we were just looking for this year, I would say it's, you know, it's a council priority, you know, knowing that it's we'll, we'll just use that twenty-five thousand dollars for the really egregious structures, you know. I, I would love to do at least three or four. There, there are at least three or four that could go. Like I said, we have a watch list of, of eighty that needs some amount of strong abatement. It always, it doesn't necessarily have to be demolition. I mean, some of them, as, as council members have commented, it, you know, piles of trash, that's, that's easy. Or, you know, fixing, you know, the, the, well, in, in some cases, there are dangerous parts of the structure. And then we have to determine, is it, are we repairing a structure? Are we demolishing the entire structure to address the one dangerous part? I can think of one where it's literally the, the front porch stoop area is collapsing, and it's going to be a hazard very, very soon if it's not already. And so, you know, what that, what that looks like is something else. So I'm sorry if this is a roundabout answer. I'm, I'm saying it, it varies. I can, I can literally spend as much money as you give me on, on cleaning this up, and I, I don't think it'll completely solve our problem. But that being said, you know, if we could, if we could get even seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, that would start. And then that would cycle back through in a couple of years, and we'd be able to use that money again.
Those funds diminish over time, though, as I mentioned, right? Seven or eighty thousand dollars this year in five years is market value is fifty or sixty thousand, right?
Correct.
You'd have to supple, you have to supplement that over, over some period of time. We don't damage.
Right. Yeah, but, but, by the time, by the time that we see that money again, it is worth less than when we put it into this. Plus, there's, plus, there's all of the administrative costs that go into it, even though we're allowed to recover the administrative costs. We, we cannot capture absolutely all of it because of ongoing work and time and whatnot. So we, we capture as much as we can, but that, that number is always changing every time we deal with a subject property, so.
I have a question about, like, how's that get burned or, you know, buildings that get burned? There have been times where, right away, I remember the hotel burned down, city public courses out there that day leveling it. How fast on me is, like, I'm thinking of the Seventh Street property. Why are, I mean, why has it been months? Why, why can't we move as fast with that that we did with others?
That was an imminent danger, and there may have been a body involved. So that started some of the abatement process. In the building. So that started some of the abatement process. So we had to, we had to make it safe for first responders to get into the building. If you're talking about the one on Grove Street.
Yeah.
It's a brick building. The shell, you know, the interior of it. Burned out. So you had a shell. So we had to make it safe for first responders to be able to search that building. And so that's how that abatement started so quickly. Otherwise, if it's not an imminent threat or danger, then it. We need to go through the. Abatement process and hearing examiner.
That one on Seventh that. Burned, it's, it's got boards on the windows and everything. I mean, that's beyond repair. Can that be a practice building for the fire department?
If they received permission from the owner, that's, that's the issue right now. The owner is either absentee or they're not responding. Jay might have more specifics specifically, but the owner has to agree to that. The building isn't in jeopardy of falling on the sidewalk and hurting a member of the public. So we, we don't have the ability to go and do an emergency abatement. We have to go through the, the steps of Jay.
And in, in that part, oh, sorry.
Once you get the permission to abate it, or you have the go ahead to abate a house. Can if it's, if it had been a fire, a house that burned like on Seventh and the owner says, yeah, go ahead. Can the fire department come in and practice, do a practice burn on that?
We would, we'd leave them, we'd leave up to them to assess that. If the building is structurally compromised, they're probably not going to send their firefighters into that and they need to assess that. So it depends on the, on the structure itself.
The cost would be a lot less if. That all came down to the fire. Okay.
And, and in the case of the one, I mean, not, I want to go too much into the one on Seventh, but the owner has made repeated assertions. That he's going to be submitting for permit to renovate, that the interior is still structurally sound. He's had an engineer out, he's just waiting quote for spring to begin work on, on that project. So we were giving him a few more weeks. We were just in contact with him very recently, actually. And hoping that he makes good on his word to renovate the structure. And so, so we're, we're hoping that he gets on that.
We've been down this road many times before, right? There's good intentions and then they're stringing the city along. Yeah, I think we, we've had both over, over the years here. And at, at a certain point, we need to take. The right action and the effort to move forward through the abatement process. And then that sometimes is the carrot or the stick, however you want to look at it. I think it's, it's some of these individuals are moving forward and dealing with their, their properties.
Any more questions on the abatement section before I kind of move on? Seeing none. So I just wanted to talk about some challenges that we've had this year. And, you know, they're, they're not necessarily bad challenges. They've just been unanticipated challenges or challenges that were. We'll say more challenging than, than were anticipated. The first of which was the move from the police department to community and economic development. So when. Without going into way, way, way too much detail about what a reserve officer is and limited commissions and all kinds of stuff. It was determined that our code enforcement officers couldn't remain as limited commission officers within the police department. And so they were moved to community and economic development, which is honestly a good place for them to be. But they had been relying heavily on access to this proprietary system called Spelman. Which is used for running all of the police. Police calls essentially misdemeanors, derelict vehicles, all kinds of stuff. It's a really comprehensive database of, of individuals, vehicles, all kinds of stuff that they use very heavily. And they no longer had access to it. Also, the infractions that were issued had been done using city books. And there's a whole bunch of rules under the RCW and the WAC about. What an infraction book and system has to look like and what the, the contents have to be. And how they're managed and confidentiality and all those kinds of things. And so now they were, they were cut off from that as well. And so we had to develop using our, our investment in entergov, a new electronic record system. So I've been working predominantly with Lexi. One of our code enforcement officers to work with entergov Tyler Tech to get a record system. That meets the definition of the electronic record system that we can use for the state. That'll cover our ability to issue infractions. We were, because of not having infraction books, because of not having a system that met the state requirements, et cetera, et cetera. We were for a very brief period of time unable to issue infractions. We can only issue the notices of violation. And we just got out of the, the testing period with entergov. And so now we're able to use. The enforce module to, to issue infractions that can be received by the court. So that's a huge step forward and it took a lot of sorting that out. We have just new processes and reporting since their staff are, are reporting to me now instead of a police department, police chief. There were issues. We had a number of meetings with Macecom and the police department about radios and logistics and. Who to call for what and when to call for who and, and there, there was, it, it ended up being a much, I think. Larger deal because we were, we were pulling a thread on a larger sweater. And, and it was really kind of unraveling little things that had been woven into the, the system for years and years and years. And so it's taken a long time to sort out and unpack how to operate a code enforcement. Group that without the police support that they had before. So there was, I, I would say just that logistical stuff took up quite a bit of time at the very beginning. We've also had an unusually high number of cases and not just our properties that are on our watch list. You know, the, the derelict structures and, you know, literal houses with holes in them where it looks like somebody drove through the front, you know, so on and so on. But we've had homelessness issues, RV camping, there's been a number of arson's and derelict structures. So we have our, our, our maintenance, you know, follow-up list is longer. It's, it's, there's just been a lot more work and it's been. Just unanticipated the volume, I think. And then. The two last things to mention is just funding. We have no dedicated funding for the abatement program or for community cleanups. We're just kind of squeezing that out of the couch cushions wherever we can find it. Animal welfare costs, we've had a large number of sick animals and surrendered, well, not surrendered, sorry, abandoned animals this year. And we've had a lot of costs with that too. And it's more than is typically budgeted and allocated in a year. And then finally, as I mentioned before, we've, one of our code enforcement officers has been out for two months for some confidential issues. And so it's, it's been just one person running the show for a couple of months now. And that has just eaten up our ability. In addition, with all of these other things, the electronic record system, the additional animals, the. Kind of all of these issues stacking up, it's, it's been harder to be more proactive with the code enforcement. But with that, a positive note, I have been working really hard and Lexi's been working really hard to help organize a community cleanup. And so this is going to be May thirteenth and twentieth. It's the two middle Saturdays in May. From nine AM to three PM, we're going to have people able to bring down one pickup load worth of trash per household. There's a list of hazardous waste materials that are prohibited. And that's Mason County garbage or landfill regulations, not, not our regulations necessarily. But anybody who can provide residency from the city of Shelton, whether that's a utility bill or a driver's license with a Shelton address. So on and so on can bring down their, their trash and we will haul it to the dump for them. And as I understand, this program's been pretty successful in the past. And hopefully these, these two Saturdays will get us kind of moving in the right direction towards, you know. Getting some of these properties that we're talking about, the people who've just gotten behind, don't know where to take it, don't know how to take it, whatnot. We've, we can help them a little bit more with this. There are other methods that I've heard have been used in the past. Everything from people just taking all their stuff out to the, the curb and leaving it for public works and the garbage folks to come pick up. There's been, I, I think probably five or six different ways that we've done it in the past with vouchers, different locations, whatnot. I'm, I'm willing and open to build a program around this. That we. My, my goal is just to be as, as productive and effective as possible with the funding that we have. And to, to get as much trash moved out of people's yards, off the streets and into the landfill, so. With that, I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any more questions, take any more suggestion. And I've definitely heard. The council's preference tonight from, from the majority of you that present, that you want a more proactive schema. And we will begin undertaking that absolutely with the resources we have.
Yeah, one more request and it's regular reporting to us. Be it monthly or quarterly, you can pitch it to us what you think is reasonable. But it would be good to get. You know, your watch list. I would like to see that and I would like to kind of just see. The complaints as they come in each month and what actions have been taken by the city to date.
And if I may, thank you, because that was my note here at the top. I don't know if there's a way to tie that to the specific types of violations too, because I think it'd be helpful if we had an idea of. What are the types of things that we're seeing as challenges? Because that may help us better address those specific issues, because obviously everything is not a problem. We see certain trends. And if we have the data about that, it can help us better address some of those issues.
Jake, can I ask, what is the capacity of our landfill? And how long can we continue to fill it?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. It's the county.
It's a transfer station. So it, the landfill's not operating anymore in Mason County, so it's transferred out to offsite. So everything goes in trucks and. And leaves Mason County as far as I know. Yeah, most likely regional landfill over in Republic area.
And also the recycling and the. Paper and the plastic and the glass and all that shit down.
As far as I know, there's no processing facilities or recycling here.
Would it be helpful, Mark, to get you kind of the data points we're looking for since you had a couple others? Just one.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I mean, we can, we can take a stab at it certainly, but if you have specifics that you'd like to see. Certainly we can provide data points as far as the type of violation and where we are in the process of our, of our active enforcement. By all means, that's, that's something we can provide. But if you, if there are something, you know, something that's really specific that you'd like to see, please forward that to me and we'll make sure that's, that's included.
Usually most helpful when we, you know, we get called out on something, it's like the. When did we recognize the problem? So dates and times, it's just critical. And then just, you know, what, what have we done to this point?
I think following through with our app, I'm sorry. Following through with our, with our, my civic app, because we, we get immediate response back to the person that's made the report. Whether it's been assigned, resolved, canceled, whatever that action is. And, and so if we can follow that through, through this code enforcement process, how it's, how it's being actively addressed. Whether that's being assigned, whether it's been. Cancelled or, you know, whatever it might be resolved at that case and what that, what that resolution may be with the timeframe or the dates involved. Yeah, we can certainly get that to you.
Wouldn't that be just easy enough to put up on the webpage? It's public record anyway, correct?
Potentially. Yeah, let's see.
Push people to that as opposed to saying, what are you doing about this? Or did you look at it on our website? Yes, this is where we're at in the process of it. We're thirty days into it. We've, we've given them five violations. And, and now we're to abatement, so.
I have seen in some communities, the top ten list that is, that is on websites, that is public.
And we have a pretty cool website.
So it's publicly produced with addresses and pictures of those. I don't know if that's generally much, if there's much benefit.
There's nothing wrong with that.
But, but certainly addressing those and showing the council, some of the, some of the properties that we're dealing with.
Then it would be something special we need, we can just look at the webpage and, and see exactly what we're looking for.
If, if I can follow up with a clarifying question. So you're, you're interested not in, in just like statistics of like, we've got like. You know, a hundred cases and we've responded to eighty percent of them within five days. Like you want like addresses and timelines beyond like, like the detail behind those.
That would answer everyone's question that calls in and has an issue with a specific property, especially then they could just find it themselves and know that. It one, two, three Main Street has been looked at and tagged four times. If it didn't alleviate cause, but at least give them a place for us to push them as opposed for us to come have to find you to give us data and information to get back to them. I mean, it just takes two to three steps out of it.
I think what we're looking at here is like, how do we balance the transparency and the data coming forward without making it cumbersome on staff? So how do we look at the, the resources we have built into our current systems or what do we need in our, to add to our systems in order to make it viable?
We already are tracking all that information, am I correct?
Uh, we are tracking.
Some, some are in the MyCivic app and some are being done through IG enforcement, through code enforcement. So it might be a meld of those to a certain extent, see how we can best. Bring that information together and provide it. We certainly want to look at what we can provide legally, maybe. Depending on the violation and the address and, and the property owners involved. We certainly want to be sensitive to that.
But I would still assume it's all public record though. Couldn't I put in a request to find out what's going on from that and get that information?
I'm not sure about the redaction of laws for a code enforcement case. But yeah, let me, Jay might have some more information there, but yeah, we will, we're certainly dive into that.
You guys have a basic gist. We're just, we're looking to be fed some more, some more information here. Ideally, as council member both said, if there's a one-stop shop, that's, that's like, that's perfect, right? I mean, I, and. Yeah, I, I would say like all the electronic record keeping should be centralized, consistent. You know, so if, if entergov is that tool, then great, because that's up and running. It's an awesome point is to it, you know. But yeah, I think on this one is definitely something I think every set, every one of the seven of us hear about. If not weekly, a few times a month, right? You know, so, and we see it. You know, I drive by a lot of stuff.
I have just two comments for Jay on the community cleanup day to clarify. The community dump days are for city of Shelton residents, correct? The county runs their own program. So just because your address is Shelton. Does not necessarily mean that that's the correct location. So I, I have gotten that question a couple of times already, so just want to clarify that. And then I don't know if there's an opportunity, only, my only concern with having a centralized dump on the dump day. Is what that might look like for folks that don't have access to those vehicles or elderly people who need help with, you know, moving junk off their property. So even if there's something as simple as again, us reaching out to the different volunteer groups within the community associations, et cetera. And saying, here's the day it's happening. If you know someone, if you're willing to put together a team or even just help your neighbors. So that we can kind of try to wrap around services on some of that, because I know there's some folks that. If they're in a position, as Councilman Sherman mentioned, and they don't physically have the capability to move things off their property. This would be a really wonderful opportunity for folks to rally around their neighbors and their friends to help and take advantage of this resource.
I will reach out. If you have any additional partners, I know that a couple that we've worked with in the past. But if you have others who you think are allied organizations, please forward those to me and I will make contact and see if. If they're also willing to assist, I can reach out, like I said, to the ones that we've, we've worked with previously for sure.
It could be as simple as your neighbor has a trailer.
Washington Tony Chuck removed.
Be careful what you ask for, Jay.
As far as the animal control, I, I recognize the, the balancing act of, you know, one, one challenge of being. Tight budget, small city, we have a lot of employees who point two, point five, point seven, different departments and things. I'd love to have more conversation about contracting out animal patrol services and pushing, you know, full-time FTEs to code enforcement. So I'm open to having discussions on that. So there's, there's an active offer for that. Yeah, let's, let's get it going.
Yeah, I know there were some discussions prior to Jeff's departure. It never came full circle, but it's certainly something that's on Jay and my, my radar. And we're certainly interested in finding opportunities to maybe alleviate some of the burden the city has. Would also provide a service that's above and beyond that we can provide with our resources available.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, like we'd like to think about starting an abatement fund. We would also like thinking about starting the community cleanup with the, with the abatement and helping out with the base. Is that, is that better direction? That's unclear.
We made, we, we could certainly address that in a supplemental and come back to council. We're planning to come back to council with a supplemental budget in June, as that is. So as we reassess particularly our general fund is, which these funds would come from to support a project such as abatement fund. We'll come back with some, with some priorities at that point. And then certainly we can address it to the formulation of twenty twenty-four budget to a greater extent. Obviously, we haven't adopted twenty twenty-three budget now. We have very little leeway to move, move funds from one program to the other. As tight as the general fund is, but we'll certainly, you know. As tight as the general fund is, but we'll certainly, you know, dig around in the couch cushions and see what we can find to to make something work.
Just do fill the booth at the intersection.
Mark, the, the solid waste fund that is currently funding the C Street cleanup. If there's money left in that account, can that be used for abatement money? Or what could it be used for garbage cleanup?
Potentially, yeah. At this point, we don't anticipate with the C Street landfill project going on and some of the, it's not complete yet. Let's put it that way. And there's some long-term monitoring for that project too. So if we have any solid waste funds left, we certainly want to dedicate those to the long-term monitoring and management of that, that site. Rather than pull that from the general fund. So we'll certainly look over that over the next, I think it's probably two months while that project's kind of closing out and see where we are with, with any remaining funds, particularly that ecology help assistance with, with the project and then see what solid waste funds are left over there too.
Yeah, I did. Just a thought and it's now I'm thinking about it for more than a couple of seconds. It's a great idea. But anyway, I'll say it. I'll take a stab at it. So when we write tickets for code enforcement violations in the, you know, penalties come in. Where, where does, that all goes to general fund? Is there anything we can do to dedicate that to the abatement fund as opposed to just into the general fund? Now I say that and I also now realize that it's not a lot of money at all. It's very small amount of money. And I don't want to set a precedent that we're trying to build the, the abatement fund by writing more tickets.
At the end of the day, it's, it's probably zero.
It's probably zero.
Yeah, because we aim for voluntary compliance. I'll tell you right now, we, we have a, we have a citation that's been through municipal court now for about two years. And this is a shoreline violation, violation of, of shoreline program. It's still not resolved. I think the, the, let's see, I think the gentleman was electing to do some community service and then rather than pay a fine at this point. But maybe at, at the time of resolution, there, there could be some fines that are assessed, but we want compliance. At the end of the day, we want that, that violation to be pulled out of the shoreline and that property to brought, be brought into compliance and voluntarily without, without a court order if, if possible, you know, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, but staff trying to get this to, to resolution. So if, if we don't collect the fine and we get resolution, all the better. That means it's happening faster. Isn't the state get all the fine money that comes through the courts? Question for you, I guess.
Most of it, yes. That's the best one.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and our, our infraction fee is also set. I'm, I don't remember it exactly. I think it's two hundred and thirty dollars or something like that. And so that's, you know, it's very minimal. It doesn't even cover the staff time necessarily to issue an infraction, much less get the resolution through. But then we, you know, we run the risk of it being kind of egregiously pointed against the people who already can't afford it anyway. I mean, we, we can assume that most of the people who aren't taking care of their properties are doing so because they don't have the money to do so. And if we're, you know, charging them what it actually costs to, you know, process a misdemeanor, I mean, it, it could be, you know, just adding, I guess, the insult to injury or whatnot, you know. And so I, I understand we want people to adhere to the law and we want people to be accountable for their actions. But also, you know, it's, it's hurting people who are already hurting essentially. And so we, we, if they're, I, I, I like the idea of having a carrot and a stick where we're, we're able to provide services to help people to get where they need to go. But also have the consequences for not getting there after we've given you the opportunity. And so that's, that's the kind of program that I would love to build.
This community cleanup on the thirteenth to the twentieth, is that the United Way cleanup or is that city sponsored?
This city sponsored.
And when's United Way doing theirs?
I haven't heard if they have a plan for this year as of yet.
It's just tough because it feels like we only have a stick for people that care. Because when you don't care, the stick's not very effective.
Yeah.
Because you can go years and, and not have to do anything other than throw away letters.
Yeah, and that's still like I've been. I'm with you on that because it's like we've been sitting on this and, you know, we took the approach a few years ago. It's like, no, we want to educate. We want to get voluntary compliance. And, and yeah, I mean, when we have people who will comply, it, it works, right? And that's, that's great. But the overwhelming majority, it's, it's, it's blown us off at this point. And I'm ready to get the hammer and deal with that.
And frankly, past experience, institutional knowledge, the most effective code enforcement officers and programs we've had are just the annoying ones. They're showing, they're showing up to the doorstep almost daily basis, but weekly basis and saying, you know, listen, we just need this cleaned up. How can we get you there? You know, if it's a, if there's a dump voucher or if it's having a dumpster show up or it's just saying, you know, I don't want to write the, the, the violation, but you're giving me no choice. And then it finally gets to that point or they take out, you know, a garbage can at, you know, a week or something like that, but progress and it's just being persistent. And it starts whittling away, but you have to come back to those properties again, right? You have to follow up. I've heard that a number of times tonight. We have to continue putting that effort into these properties to make sure it doesn't continue, you know, down that road. Some of it is generational, you know, and there's people that just don't have the ability, don't see that as a priority. So sometimes it's generational and my time here, we're dealing with some, some families that, you know, maybe parents or grandparents who are passed on and it's just kind of been how, how those have lived and haven't had that as a priority or don't have to mean. So it, it takes that effort.
One thing we had a property, what was it on Washington Street that we were visiting often and Joe and I on a couple of occasions and we involved Jeff and we were trying to find the owner of the property. I think we should be able to find both the owner and the tenant. Because the tenant's going to say, ah, screw you.
Yeah, that was.
To get me out of here, you know.
We had a soft spot for the owner.
Yeah.
But it was really the tenant that was screwing with the owner. And we didn't have the horsepower to deal with the tenant for the owner, right?
The owner's ultimately responsible for their property. So they need, they need to take responsibility for that. They're absentee owners. That's, that's on them. They, if they can't manage their properties, we need, we need to make them aware of the condition of their properties if they don't know that.
And they need. Virtual and residential doesn't, it doesn't just.
And you take that effort.
So, yeah, plenty of that on both sides.
Yeah.
This is a study session. So we're allowed to throw out random ideas, correct? And I have some that are really unpopular, especially since we're in government. Sometimes government doesn't always have to be the end all be all. It doesn't have to be your answer. Sometimes you can take care of your neighbors. Sometimes you can look out for each other without involving the government. And sometimes that is a better way of going about things. So it wouldn't be such a terrible thing is if your neighbor has a pickup and you need help. Maybe you could work together instead of calling the city to say they did a bad thing, their place is a mess and complaining about it. Wouldn't it be just great if we could help each other out? I know that's not something we can fit in here, but I know we're being recorded.
From, 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 from your lips to their ears, please, council member. I, I, I hope so. I, I, I agree. I mean, we can crowdsource our solution would be a lot faster for sure.
Yeah, and it would be a lot more financially efficient for us because we're always like, well, where's the money? Where's the money? Well, your neighbor has a pickup. Maybe you bake him some cookies.
Anything else? Does council have any new items for discussion tonight? Interim City Manager, you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
The meeting is at June, it's six fifty eight PM.